Yes. You want me to move over? The councilman for today?
Yeah. Call our meeting to order and let Laura Light see this in the invocation.
Would you pray with me, please? Father, we're so thankful for the opportunity to gather freely. Father, thank you for the freedoms that come in knowing you. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be your light in this community. Father, we ask you to be with us tonight as we do the business of the city. We ask you for your wisdom, for your guidance in all that we do, that it will be pleasing in your sight. Father, thank you for our first responders. Thank you for those that serve this country and the armed forces. Thank you that you are their protection. Father, you tell us that you know our needs even before we ask, but Father, we just continue to ask you that you would send your reign to our community and to this area in Texas. Father, we know that you know we need reign, and we ask you for it. It's in the name of your precious son, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Please join us for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Can I just make a public comment? When you come up with those states or names of the city you live in, start with Brandon Johnson.
I want to thank the citizens for doing their diligence and having their voice heard by voting out Gerald Tomlin. Thank you for being here as long as you have, for whatever you've contributed, but I would ask that the rest of the council, since you're unanimous vote on basically every single item, that you allow that seat to stay vacant until the people can put who they want in there by voting. We had 572 signatures on the ballot. Only 1,600 were the qualified, that was the number of qualified voters. Now Laura Watkins, over at the elections office, gave Sharon the wrong numbers. I went and spoke to Laura, and she bounced around. She knew, well, she told me 1,800 is what we needed and change. Apparently, the number was like 1,600 and something. But the bottom line is, there's fault over there, and I'll tell you, Sharon was not very nice at all when we turned, when she said that we did not have enough signatures and said, just gave a blanket, well, she gave a denial, kind of outlined it, but the problem was, she didn't give us a chance to request, to make it right. Didn't get a chance to fix any mistakes that might have been on our part, and then she ran off. And that is not a good representation of public servants. And again and again, I talked to them at the water board earlier, said the same thing. If y'all want to build the trust of the community again, you got to be transparent. But while I'm passing out the bad news, these lawyers that sit over here, that work for the city, y'all need to remember that the people elect y'all, not these attorneys. So one of the things that was told to us when we questioned it is, well, you need to get an attorney. No, we don't. We need to talk to y'all. We don't, we don't deal with attorneys. So what I would just ask is, y'all reflect on that, leave the seat open, and quit listening so much to these attorneys. It's bad advice. They're paid liars. Thank you.
That's Terry Clavel.
Terry Clavel, 1301 Southeast 16th Street in Middle Wells. Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor and Council. First, I would like to thank everyone who made the recall petition a success, from the folks that so graciously and enthusiastically gave their time and effort to and money to make it possible that every house in the entire ward was visited. They, these people worked every night, Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturday, to get everyone there and to be knocking on those doors and get the 572 signatures that we had. Next, I cannot overlook that every person that signed the petition and that took the first step in communicating to the council that we believe that you have gravely lost the will of the people somewhere in the process. These are the people that you elected to serve and that you work for us. We demand a right to have a say in how our money is being spent. Next, I want to address how disappointed it was for me to be met at every point in this process with opposition from some of the folks down at City Hall, who we do pay the money to do their job. What appears to be a clear-cut process defined by both our charter and the Texas Election Code certainly proved to be more difficult than it should have been. From the very first day when I let my intentions be known, rather than guide me through the process, I was given responses that were not clear, or I was told that someone would have to get the opinion of the city attorney prior to proceeding. Okay. I wasn't asking for anything more than any reasonable person would have asked for in that situation. Right off the bat, when we turned in the signatures, we were immediately told that we had more than 30 signatures less than what we had counted and submitted. Thank you, Sharon, for sitting down with us and going over that one by one until we came up with the total of 572. Now, we've come to the point where I've turned in the signatures, and the charter gives you five days to do that. I received word on the seventh day, the first certification, which was later proven to be false, related to five days, it was stated in the charter, it was seven, and I knew right away that that could be right. I knew there was no way we could be short. We'd taken all that into consideration. We had extra. Almost immediately, I realized that the clerk had used an incorrect number of qualified voters from the list that she was given from our elections administrator. When she was making the 25 percent calculation, she included the suspense coded, excuse me, suspense coded voters, which was a violation of the charter and the Texas Election Code. Okay, during that time, from the false certification to the 11th day of the month, when I got the actual certification, it was correct, somewhat correct, it was given about by someone at the city to a local news media outlet, and the story was published prematurely without all the facts. So we had about two days, two to three days there, where the entire public believed that this petition, the petition was not successful, when it really was. When I did get the new certification, it was dated the 11th, it was a few minutes before 5:00 PM, and I was told that, yes, it was sufficient, and that we had in fact exceeded the number of required signatures. My problem with it is this, there was nothing said at all in this line-by-line, event-by-event, you know, synopsis of the situation. Every move I made was blind out in great detail, but when we get to the point where the petitions were not certified correctly, it's totally devoid of any facts. Okay? We make the process, we try to follow the process, and when we do, it still doesn't get taken, you know, taken into consideration, and we don't get mad with transparency and accountability. Thank you so much for listening this evening.
Can we proceed to the consent agenda? Any comments, questions, or discussion on any items from the council? No, we entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passive, six, zero. Item number 10, certification of results of the recall petition for Ward 1, Councilmember Gerald Tomlin.
Mayor, Council, there's a chronological, chronological list of activities provided in the council packet and that is also available to the public. On September 1st, an affidavit for recall was submitted and accepted in proper form, and the recall petition was issued. On September the 15th, I requested and received the registered voters' list for Ward 1 from the county elections administrator. The list included 2,067 individuals, and 25 percent required signatures were 517. On October 2nd, 72 of the 95 pages of the recall petition were presented to me and examined. There were 506,9 signatures, 451 were verified, and 118 were unconfirmed. On October 4th, although not required to do so, I requested the county elections administrator to review the recall petition, and I provided them with an exact copy. On October the 6th, the county elections administrator's office confirmed the examination results I completed on October, October the 4th. On October the 9th, I provided certification to the petitioner that the recall petition was insufficient due to being only 451 of the required 517 valid signatures, which was 66 signatures short based on the registered voter list of 2,067. On October 10th, I was notified by the county elections administrator that my voter list of 2,067 individuals included canceled and suspended voters. The accurate number of registered voters for Ward 1 was actually 1,642. Based on 1,642, the 25 percent required signatures were updated to 411. On October 11th, I provided certification to the petitioner that the recall petition was sufficient with 451 valid signatures while only 411 were required. On October 12th, I notified Mr. Tomlin that the recall petition was certified as sufficient.
Murray, would you can lead us through the process, what it outlines, the next steps are per our charter?
Sure. The city secretary, city clerk, excuse me, has presented the certified recall petition as sufficient and in compliance with the city charter. Councilman Tomlin has been notified of the recall petition, and Council, you have also received notification as well. In accordance with Section 114 of the city charter, if Councilman Tomlin does not resign in five days, the council shall, and to back up, Councilman Tomlin has indicated that he does not intend to resign. Is that correct, Councilman?
These are opportunities to improve your park system and expand your park system over time and provide the types of recreation that have been identified through the stakeholder engagement process. This included, first, an on-the-ground needs assessment, looking at all your existing parks and facilities, looking at those that are provided by other providers, whether that's state, or county, or regional, or private recreation providers, things like gyms, and even campgrounds. All of these are part of the recreation ecosystem. And then, the next step was community engagement, and we'll go through a little bit more of that in detail, but reaching out to the community in a number of different ways to find out what it is everybody would like to see in the parks, both existing and in the future parks. And then, all that is combined through our analysis process to identify some priority projects and key recommendations to help meet those needs, and development of the plan There's quite a few in here, I won't go into too much detail in the interest of time, but one of the most important recommendations we came up with is was renovation of West City Park. It is your flagship park. It's the most well-visited park in the community, and it's a great park, but there's always room for improvement, and through that stakeholder engagement process, we're going to identify some real good opportunities for making an even better park. Part of that includes a renovation of the athletic complex there at West City Park, and we will go into a little more detail as we get to that slide. Also, improvements at the Mineral Wells Gym and Activity Center. These were focused more on the exterior area around the gym and activity center. I'll get into a little more detail of that as we go through the slide. And improvements at Walters Field Number 2. There's some existing tennis courts you may or may not have even noticed in the past because they've been kind of hiding behind some brush for many years, but it's an opportunity to add some additional pickleball out there, and, which is a growing activity in the community as well as across the nation. And then, expansion of Southeast Park into some adjacent property that the city already owns. Some new recreation opportunities include a potential community park down on the south side of town, where the city already owns 53 acres of land across the street from the animal shelter. That could, originally, the thought was to make it a dog park, but that could be a lot of different kinds of parks, but the goal is to take advantage of that already, that land already in city control and bring some more recreation where it's needed. Indoor recreation was highly rated in the survey resulting as well as stakeholder input from a couple of community events that we conducted, and so, we looked at some opportunities for bringing some indoor recreation to the community. And then, the remainder is opportunities in general for ways to look for new places to add parks and recreation throughout the community, including pocket parks, looking at opportunities to partner with schools, the school districts, such as a similar program down in Houston called Spark Program, which is school parks, is an opportunity where the city and the school, inter-local, where it provides access to the park by the general public after-school hours and exchange. There's an agreement where the city and the school district share in the development of any new amenities at the park and as well as maintenance. This is a great way to expand the park system and work together. And then, looking at a number of other places in the community where you could add some additional recreation. Stakeholder engagement opportunities, we had an online survey that ran for, I believe, four months, five months throughout the summer. I don't have the total number of responses off the top of my head, they are located in your, your copy of the master plan right there. We hosted a booth at the Crazy Water Festival, which was highly successful, we got a lot of great input from residents out there. And then, we had a booth at the Let's Grow Crazy Farmers Market back in October of last year. And then, throughout this process, we were collaborating with the comprehensive planning team and city staff to nail down the types of amenities and improvements the city would like to see. In summary, some of the biggest items we identified through that needs assessment was renovating West City Park, addressing indoor recreation needs, upgrading or adding additional aquatics facilities in the community, whether that's paint, splash pad, or more, taking advantage of some of the old tennis courts and converting some of them to pickleball to address that growing need, and developing off-street hiking bike trails throughout the community. And one thing that we heard a lot about is finding things for teens to do. It seems to be a need to address that, that typically outgrow the playground type of events, and if they're not into athletics, sometimes at least there's opportunities for things to do. West City Park concept, each of these major priority projects we came up with, we developed a conceptual master plan for that site to show what could fit on that site. These were done with enough detail and scale that we were able to develop an opinion of probable cost for each of those projects, so that you have an itemized list of what it would cost for individual components. That means there's the opportunity to phase it, to do all or none, or a handful of the components of renovation. Some of the things that are notable on this site is a complete renovation of the baseball softball fields. This had included some rearrangement to make them function better and allow for addition of some parking across the central portion running east to west across the site. One thing that was noted through that stakeholder engagement was the need for more pedestrian circulation throughout the community. Part of that is due, is due to the fact that one of the pedestrian bridges that's no longer there should be replaced to help make that connection across the creek to get to the other side of the park. So, we looked at some new trail opportunities throughout the area as well, renovation of the tennis courts, including adding some, turning some of those into pickleball, renovation of restrooms, and some general site furnishings and play structures improvements. Second opportunity, as I mentioned before, was improvements at the Mineral Wells Gym and Activity Center. We don't know what the long-term, long, long-term future will be of the Mineral Wells Gym as it continues to age, but it's still a functional facility and it gets a fair amount of use. One way to activate that even more is to take advantage of the, all that real estate that's adjacent, that's surrounding the Mineral Wells Gym and Activity Center. There's approximately seven acres there that can be utilized to create an opportunity for some more outdoor recreation, including renovation of those existing tennis courts out there, adding some outdoor walking trails. And in this concept, we show an event space, not maybe, not necessarily a formal amphitheater, but a versatile space that could be used for public events and activities. Also, in here, we show a, some, a new playground and lots of shade in the area, and some sand volleyball courts along with the trail that I've already mentioned. As mentioned before, the tennis courts out there at Walters Field are an opportunity to be revitalized and to add more recreation out on that side of town. There's, I believe, a capacity for a total of eight pickleball courts if that was a desire. And we're not recommending necessarily to convert all the park, the tennis courts in town into pickleball, but these are different places where you could accommodate that need. Staff indicated that there was a growing demand for pickleball, and because there's a demand for pickleball at the Mineral Wells Gym, often there's conflict with other people's desire to play other sports like volleyball or basketball, things like that. So, it's a way to give them a home of their own. Part of our task with this project was also to promote the city's overall goal of wellness and health and tourism and revitalization of the downtown. And so, we worked alongside the comprehensive planning team. One concept that came through their process was by landscape architect Willis Hinters, who developed a concept along Northwest Avenue Corridor over there by the Crazy Water Hotel for a central park essentially along that corridor. So, the city asked us to go ahead and look at another version of that so that there's some, so you could see two different options, the way that could work. And part of that's to make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes with regards to property ownership and looking at what is feasible within the public space. So what we did is come up with an alternative concept that seeks to create a civic green with lots of public space, not so much a park, but a park-like area, more formal landscape with lots of activity areas for relaxation and community gathering, some expanded parking, and taking advantage of the Crystal Canal by enhancing some landscaping on there and creating a walkway along the Crystal Canal to celebrate that historic corridor along As I referenced earlier, there's a 54-acre property that the city owns down there, south of one, you're over there by, across the street from the animal shelter. It's a large area of property, and we saw an opportunity to solve two problems that you have. One is stormwater management in the community and adding some additional recreation on the south side of town. That 54 acres gives you a significant amount of land that could be used for both of those purposes. Now, we did not do any engineering of any sort, but because of its location along the creek south of town here and downstream, it seems like a perfect opportunity to explore in the future for adding some regional detention, where you'd have basically a shelf of detention where any over, any excess stormwater can temporarily go into there. But it could also be designed so that it also is a detention feature, a retention feature as well, so there is a permanent pool elevation that allows you to have an attractive pond environment for recreation. Compatible uses could include anything from small play areas on the, the areas that aren't in the flood plain. It could be a dog park, it could be passive recreation with the picnic areas and trails along the way. And so, this is a concept illustrating that. Then, addressing the need for indoor recreation, this was one of the most highly rated features in the stakeholder involvement process. There's a desire to have more opportunities both for traditional indoor recreation like, you know, gymnasium and workout and fitness equipment and such, but also meeting spaces. And so, there's a lot of ways that could be done. That could be done with a large centralized recreation facility, or it could also be a combination of smaller community recreation centers or multipurpose centers that can be used for a number of things, from meeting space for clubs and events to gamerooms for teenagers, things like that. Now, one thing that is necessary when you really get into recreation centers, because of the scale of those facilities and the diverse possible solutions for making that happen, is a feasibility study is really warranted to really nail down what they call the program in architecture, which is what are the types of things you end up really wanting to see in a given facility, and what is that going to cost? And so, a feasibility study is a way to dip your toes in the water without, you know, going all in and realizing that it's, it's a lot more than maybe you need. And so, we recommend going through that process. Hiking bike trails, as we see in every community and also in yours, are almost always at the top of the list. There's opportunities in the community that we found for approximately 13, a little over 13 miles of trail connections that could be made to connect parks and public areas to, and for just general recreation. We've got some identified on the Crystal Canal and a drainage that comes off of the Crystal Canal that goes over to the state trailway, as well as numerous roads throughout the community where we saw significant rideaway from making trails along theirs. And then, we recommend these to be at a minimum of eight to 10 feet wide so that they can be used by both bicycles and pedestrians and two-way traffic. And some of them that you'll see on the east side where we saw some opportunities to connect over to the state park, that obviously we take an agreement with the state park, and therefore, Texas Parks and Wildlife to make that happen, but these are some great opportunities. We provided some cost estimates for implementation within the document. This slide shows analysis, we didn't call it 10-minute walk analysis, and what we did is we evaluated all the existing parks and all these park opportunities that everybody identified throughout the plane, and it shows you how far you could get within a 10-minute walk from the park, which in reverse, it shows you how much of the area is within a 10-minute. a 10-minute walk of the park. There's some obvious service gaps because the community is spread out a little bit, and most of the parks are kind of centrally focused in the older part of town. And so these are, these areas that you see, the remaining white spaces, are areas where you'd like to see additional parks as the city continues to grow. Pocket parks and other small public spaces are another opportunity. There's places throughout downtown where it makes sense to consider possibly taking advantage of an underutilized space, it could be a quarter acre or less even, to create, you know, public gathering spaces. These don't have to be parks in the traditional sense with playgrounds and things like that, but some of the things they're doing in a lot of downtowns these days is having like alleys that become a place for small events, like St. Marcus, Texas, developed one called the Kissing Alley, and they have all kinds of events up there. People rent the space from the city for music events and dining events and things like that, and it's a popular spot for photography, for tourists, and things like that. And other communities are doing things like putting outdoor all-weather gaming tables. It could be chess tables and foosball even that are made out of concrete that can sit out there all year long, and they invite people to spend time in downtown, more urban Staff and the comprehensive planning team asked us to discuss destination facilities as a part of the tourism mission in Mineral Wells. We looked at those opportunities, and when you get into destination tourism from the point of say, say an athletic complex with the first purpose of sports tourism, we really recommend a feasibility study. And that's because it's much more than just wanting it, it's also what does the market say? How much of the surrounding region has those facilities already? Do you have enough hotels to meet that demand? And so all of these neat things need to be considered to really understand it and make good comments on that. So we would recommend considering that. Also, I'm sure you've all been, heard that Weatherford has, has some ambitions for an athletic facility, and so it considers, it makes sense to also consider the possibility of complimentary sports tourism rather than competitive sports tourism. So there's a growing market for what you might call non-traditional sports tourism, which is, you know, the mountain biking and some of these more extreme sports. There's a lot of different, even pickleball is a popular tournament sport these days. It draws a lot of visitors. So in that feasibility study process, looking at where those other opportunities are that don't necessarily compete with your neighbors, but also looking at the athletics complex opportunities too, because they can bring money in and they can drive hotel stays. The implementation plans I mentioned before includes opinions of probable cost for the big project items. As you can see here, maybe not so well on this screen, the level of detail goes all the way down to the contractor word, the not-so-interesting stuff like earthwork and insurance and contingencies and contractor market, things like that, so that you have an understanding of what the real cost of development of a project is. One thing to consider right now in this landscape is every project, every year that you defer a project, you're looking at as much as 6% cost escalation in the current construction market. So sometimes money's better spent now than five years from now, and we're seeing that across the state of Texas. And with that, I just want to mention that one of the first things you should do once you do adopt a plan is to submit that plan to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department as soon as possible, because once they accept that through their online interface, it sets the city up really well for any applications for grants in the future. Every May or, May or sometimes a little bit earlier, April, the state of Texas has their local parks grants program that provides funding for a city of this size as much as $750,000 through their grant program, and that would be a 50/50 match grant. So there'd be a total of 750,000 or more put in by the city to match those funds. But it's a great way to kick off a project. There's also, trail grants are funded at an 80% level by the state, which is also very helpful. But one of the most important things to the state of Texas when it comes to those grants is that you have a master plan in place and that any grant application is to fund projects that the community has said they wanted. And so that public input is a key component of that process. And I'm open for questions?
One of the things that, you know, a lot of, this is going to be a lot to digest.
It is.
So thank you. I think out of your presentation this evening, one of the things that kind of jumped out at me, and you're the parks guy, so, you know, our current activity center and gym is not in a very convenient location for access for the citizens. So what's the logic behind recommending such a large capital improvement project out there and turn that into a complex?
And that was kind of a moving target, because the comprehensive plan has identified opportunities where that whole area could be renovated to be something completely different. Possible, there's a lot of different ways that that area could be used, but if there wasn't going to be any change to Mineral Wells Gym and Activity Center, or and the city did not desire building a new recreation center closer to town, this is an opportunity to activate that area by making those improvements. The alternative is to build in town, and did I put it in the slide, the opportunity that we came up with for?
The yellow zone opportunity parks?
Well, we looked at a site over there by the Palopinta General Hospital. I'm surprised it's not in my presentation, I must have missed it, but it is available in your slides, I apologize. Oh, there it is. Okay, so another opportunity, I must have just breezed right past it, is to, we looked at how could we meet that mission closer in town? There's not a lot of parcels available that made sense right off the bat. Land is growing at cost, but we saw an opportunity to maybe consider a partnership with the Palopinta General Hospital. They had some acreage over there adjacent to their existing park and the hospital itself, where you could meet a bunch of recreation needs. And so in this concept, we showed an indoor recreation center and an adjacent separate auditorium. And that way, it shows you what could fit on that site, and it also includes some of that outdoor recreation as well, some trails and some outdoor activities. And that could be done all in one, or that could just be the recreation center component. But it's only about a mile outside of downtown at that rate, so it puts it significantly closer to the community. And it also shows you the scale of how much land it takes to really make that happen, and along with some opinions of probable cost for development.
This might be a Tony question, I'm not sure, but what is, do we kind of have a timeline on when we'd like to adopt this plan by? And as far as the council's concerned, what are our next steps for?
Sure. I think for this plan, if you're ready, I'd say you can adopt it as soon as today, if you're comfortable with that. Otherwise, what you might consider is adopting this and the comprehensive plan simultaneously in December. So I'd say those would be the two, the two options for you to think about.
One of the interesting things when y'all do, if you do decide to adopt this, is this is a huge opportunity to improve community engagement. Funding in the various neighborhoods give the public more input than they've ever experienced, whether it's an area that's conducive for a pocket park or a new rec center so that, you know, you have your parks board and you can defer to them. I mean, that's how it's always been done, right? I mean, this thing hadn't been updated in almost 30 years, and here we are. But it is, it's a little hard to fully grasp until we get the comprehensive plan, but from a budgeting and a priority standpoint of the community's tax dollars and what they truly want, this gives you a roadmap. Nothing in here is set in stone, as Paul was explaining, but it is, it is an anchor point where neighborhoods, interest, et cetera, you know, an aquatics facility shouldn't just be had for, you know, people that take over and wear, no more than a basketball court. We'll see if Jason's little pickleball thing makes it, but too many pads in line. But this is really a planning instrument, and it provides a tremendous opportunity for the citizen in this community to direct the parks. That was one of the needs about five years ago that was a big complaint. And so from a budgeting standpoint, even taking that participation, that input from your constituents, you know, is parks a priority, and if so, you know, just having them picked out, what do you want done, let's get it done. But this is an important next step. The comprehensive plan kind of brings it all together, and then Haley will talk about the airport plan, which is more of just a select audience, but as far as a community impactful, you're a health and wellness destination now, so this is your foundational document that provides for that to move forward. So appreciate all your hard work.
Is there any comments working with this?
Yeah, open for discussion.
No, 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 you're good. I was just going to say a couple of things that I see, it's all, you know, very detailed. I appreciate this big docket, like, do we just keep this?
And it'll be online, it'll be on.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I got it on the deal too, but I like this one, here, I have to write notes on it.
You have your name on it.
Good. So West City Park here, I know any given weekend you go by there, the current playground structure is very busy, and the little shaded pavilion there that is there currently, I think there'd be some opportunities for us to look at, maybe one on the northeast side and maybe even on the west side of it as well, because a lot of times there's multiple birthday parties and stuff trying to go on at the same time. I also would encourage maybe looking at talking with the Little League for the baseball and softball, because I know during the spring, with the current two baseball fields, softball field, Pony League field, and the Chicken E field, that place is packed to the gills on a Saturday morning. So cutting a field out may be a little bit tough, so, I don't know, we also got stuff on the base down there that maybe you can move Pony League to or whatever. That's just some things that's going in my mind. And then also, I liked from the Gym and Activity Center, there on the base with the soccer and field events. I know currently there's not many soccer fields around, a lot of people do enjoy soccer. It's kind of a recreation sport that you can play your whole life, not just, you know, like play football until you're 18 and then you're done type deal. But, you know, I don't know if maybe at the southeast parks, some of that city-owned property, we could look at additional soccer fields or something. That's just some things that came to my mind and looking at it, so.
Yeah, I mean, with that being said, I think, you know, my opinion is to, you know, we receive a lot of information today and to, you know, get back with them, note, you know, add additional concerns, questions, and do it all at once in December.
I agree with that, and I'll give Ms. Watson a chance as well, too.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I, man, I appreciate all you guys' work and input, all of the different meetings we've had with the different stakeholders and people that have had an opportunity of input. I'm truly excited to have this. I know our Parks and Recreation Superintendent is going to be excited to have a plan going forward, because as Mr. Sullivan stated, it's been, it's been five years in the making to get us to today. It is a second, a little too long to get here, but I'm thrilled that we're finally here. But I do agree, agree that we probably should give Councilwoman Watson an opportunity of input, and I like the idea of giving the final stamp of approval along with our comprehensive plan all at the same time. But I know Carrie's going to be excited to get some direction.
Any further comments or questions from the council?
Just way back to my beginning on the council, when we did the bond election forums and all of that stuff, recreation was big on people's mind, it still is today. And so I appreciate what you brought us. It's worthy and it was presented well, and we'll give it our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, yes?
Yeah, just one thing, as we're talking about this, so December, one thing I would suggest is you might want to consider a date, a final date to get all of your thoughts and comments in, so we can get those to call, and make sure that any corrections are made in time to get it back to you for the December meeting.
Would Monday, the 20th of November work for you, Paul, as far as any comments or additional direction?
That'd be perfect.
Okay. And we'll anticipate adoption of that plan on December the 5th?
December 5th. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Save deadline and time for the call, December 5th.
Item number 15, consider and take appropriate action on the presentation of the Mineral Wells Regional Airport Airport Master Plan and Airport Layout Plan Update.
Hi, council, how are you? In your packets, we have the draft inventory and forecast chapter for the master plan and airport layout plan update, and then Nathan's slide is going to be there as well. Today, we gave the same update to our airport board, and then we also gave it to the Project Steering Committee for the master plan. So we've gotten a lot of good feedback. I think that it's really interesting to see all of the things that we put in our slot analysis being taken into consideration and be implemented. For some time now, it's been, we've been using our resources and everything to make the best educated guess on this growth that's coming to the airport. It's coming, it's coming, it's coming. It's been really wonderful working with Barber, because they're taking all of those things and making actionable projects and giving us that guidance. And I think we're still pretty, pretty early in the draft, but I think that it's going very, very well.
About halfway through, is that right?
Yeah, about halfway through.
At least that's what it looks like on the little graph.
Yeah. So I have Nathan Polesgrove, he's the Aviation Planning Director with Barber, he's going to give y'all an update.
Thanks, Haley, and good evening, council.
Will this be as technical as it was earlier?
I'll teach you about it here in an hour and a half, because that'll get help. This will be very helpful. First off, thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you and give you an update on the Airport Master Plan. Like Haley said, my name is Nathan Polesgrove, I'm the Director of Aviation Planning at Barber, and I'm your project manager for this project. The slide that you see on the screen, and this should be in your packets as well, provides an overview of the process that we have to go through to develop an Airport Master Plan. So I always say the Airport Master Plan is a prescribed process. The FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, has a process that we have to follow to go through the development of a master plan. You see that on the screen, I won't go through all the steps, but what I'll draw your attention to are the headers that you see along the top of the graphic there. The process begins with an intensive data gathering phase. We basically do an inventory analysis of your existing airports, and we kind of take a snapshot in time of your existing infrastructure at the airport as it is today, and then we do a forecast of what, of how the aircraft traffic at the airport could change over the next 20 years. 20 years is the prescribed timeline that the FAA has for master plan. So we're looking 20 kind of plus years out as far as what aircraft traffic would look like, and then also eventually what airport infrastructure would look like. From that data gathering phase, we go into an analysis phase to say, okay, if we see the growth and the changes in air traffic, aircraft traffic that we think could occur, what does that mean for airport infrastructure? What needs to change? How does it need to be improved? And then from there, it goes into a planning phase. That's where we take essentially what we think the changes are that need to be made, and we give you kind of a prescribed step-by-step process to move from the infrastructure that you have today to what we think that ultimate infrastructure needs to look like. Now, any good plan needs to have some flexibility built into it, and so we build that into the plan by kind of creating alternatives that allow the plan by kind of creating alternatives that allow some, some space for flexibility. If you need to develop a hangar instead of 100 by 100 here, and you need to go 125 by 100, we allow some space to do that. We also, as part of your capital improvement plan at the very end, give you a trigger mechanisms for projects where you can look at projects on an annual basis and determine, hey, this may need to move up in priority, or this may need to be down, moved down in priority. The one thing that's really important that comes out of this process is the Airport Layout Plan Set. That's a really important document because that goes to Tech dot aviation and then ultimately the FAA for review and approval. And projects have to be shown on that document to be eligible for grant funding. This is a snapshot of your airport as it is today. This is what we would call an existing condition exhibit. You know your airport well. You've got two runways. You have a wonderful instrument approach to runway 3-1 that's used quite frequently. And you've got multiple taxiways that serve those runways, as well as hangars and apron space, et cetera. I'm not gonna spend too much time on this because this really is stuff that you already know probably to a good extent. You know what you have today. So let's start talking about the future. Like I mentioned before, one of the things that we do as part of this process is we have to do a forecast of future aircraft traffic. There's two primary forecasts that we do. The first is the one that you see at the top of the screen there, which is a base aircraft forecast. The bottom one that you see below that is an operations forecast. So, base aircraft are aircraft that basically call your airport home. They're the ones that hangar there, kind of live there day in and day out, let's say. The operations is an aircraft takeoff or a landing of an aircraft. That counts as an operation. And so, as you can see on the graphs, the current figures that you see on the screen, we believe to be pretty accurate. We know you have about 85 base aircraft right now. Current operations, so current takeoff and landing numbers in a year is about 23,000. When we do the forecast, we were somewhat aggressive in this because we want to think ahead about what the future could look like. And so, you'll see the long-term forecast. So essentially, 20 years from now, we think that your base aircraft number could grow up to about 130 aircraft in total, and your operations would grow likely by about 50% is what we're projecting there. Now, what does all that mean? You heard me talk about that analysis phase, and that's where we take that inventory of your existing infrastructure. We take that forecast, and we basically say, okay, in light of the forecast, how does that existing infrastructure need to change? These are some of the things that have come out of the Facility Requirements Analysis. This, I won't go through, we've got a lot of other things that came out of the Facility Requirements Analysis. These are really just some of the highlights of that. A couple of things that we've identified, your existing runway length at your airport, so the length of your runways, is sufficient to meet the vast majority of aircraft that are gonna operate there. We actually looked back through some of the historic data, and there's instances of aircraft flying from here to Europe, nonstop, out of your airport. And that's not in the dead of winter. That's in the summer, when aircraft performance is usually diminished by temperatures, et cetera. There is what we call a line-of-sight issue with one of your runways. So essentially, you want, as pilots, you want to be able to see from one end of the runway to another, the other end of the runway, to be able to visually separate yourself from other traffic. Runway 1331 has kind of, if you will, in the runway that can prevent that line of sight. And so that's something that we ultimately need to look at fixing. There's a number of taxiway improvements that'll also be needed as far as kind of rearranging some of the taxiways to kind of apply with current FAA standards, and modifying some things on the apron to prevent what we call direct apron-to-runway access. The final thing that I'll mention, and I won't talk you through this entire table here, but what I'll point out to you is really the outcome of it. The table shows that something that's really gonna be a key when we talk about the future of the airport is planning for additional hangar space and making sure that we can provide that space to really facilitate the growth that we need to see. And so, when we get to the alternative space, which is the next part, we'll be looking at what's the best location for that hangar space to be. So, next steps, we've identified what some of the development objectives and the needs are through this Facility Requirements Analysis. The alternatives process is where the fun really begins, and we get to look at ways of making those improvements and identifying what's the best way to make some of those improvements in the future. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions that anybody has.
We're all coming through a lot of information.
Everybody's looking at me lately.
The real question is, obviously, at the end of this process, this will have to be council for adoption, just like the plans you're talking about over here. We're just not that far along yet.
And the next step in the process?
Would be alternatives. So that's where we take all the development objectives that we've established, and we look at what's the best way to make these improvements.
Any questions or comments from the council on the information we've been presented so far?
I'm just curious, timeline going forward. I know part of this fits us to that Airport Layout Plan. How far away are we from knowing our Airport Layout Plan idea?
Sure. So, you'll have a good idea of what the infrastructure is that will go into the Airport Layout Plan once the alternatives are finalized, which will likely be sometime in December or January is when we would have the idea, this is what the future plan looks like for the airport. The Airport Layout Plan itself, as far as the approval process, takes some time beyond that because Tech dot has to review it, FAA has to review it, and that's something that they typically, it takes some time for them to move through that review process.
I understand they do have a timeline that they're required to complete that in. I'm not sure it's only a couple of months or something. I think they have when, once it's presented to them. I was just curious how quickly we might see that. It sounds like that's gonna be quick, so I'm excited for that.
I would just comment that, being in the meeting earlier today, it was very obvious to me that, you know, overall, our airport is very healthy. You know, we have plenty of city facilities and structures and other things that we look at and get a report on all the time. And it's, you've got problem after problem after problem. So this was refreshing. And then also, you know, credit to Haley's for some of the things that she's already got budgeted in, in the budget that we just approved, that are addressing just some, I say minor, 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 I mean, correct me, I'm not an airport expert either, but already budgeted in addressing so many of those things. And I know that, you know, there are already long-term plans in place that, you know, she's complementing this, this process. So, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So, y'all said that there's not enough hangar space. So, if we had more hangars, we could generate more revenue?
Yes.
So, it's because, do we have like, I guess, obviously, if we create more hangars, we generate more revenue, right? But do we have a waiting list of people wanting to adopt their aircraft at the facility?
More, maybe the question is, how many people do we currently have on that list?
We currently have 92 on a hangar waitlist. If we break it down by priority, how close they live to Minnow Wells, because we want to take care of our people first. It's quite a long wait time, very, very long. I think some of the older members of the waitlist have been on there since 2015, because either their time did come and they weren't ready, or their time just hasn't come yet. So, it's quite extensive.
So what's the restrictions to build in the hangar?
Oh, that's such a long journey to talk about. Maybe together later?
Is this around the December now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're so close.
Well, I know also in the back, back there in the past, there's been some races and things like that. It's been done, some organized, some unorganized. I, I think that's another opportunity to look at back there. I don't know where the hangars would go. I don't know where y'all are exactly planning on all that. But I know, I'm speaking with some individuals, there is some potential of opportunities for revenue generation back there as well, from organized events.
Right. Everything on airport property does have to be aeronautical use. So that does definitely put us in a pickle for those kinds of activities. Also, it's a security thing, and also, we don't mark that reputation necessarily because not all of those organizations are safe. And one will think that they can because all of them can. And ultimately, we sign grant entrances every year. That's part of the money we get from Tech dot every year. We sign saying, yes, we're gonna adhere to this standard that the FAA and Tech dot states for the next 20 years because you helped us this year. And every year, that gets renewed because we get help every year. And that means we have to have aeronautical use on the airport.
Correct.
I know that, well, I know that in the past, too, it kind of, it also opens the door for some of the other, like Genesis has had lots of folks come through their parking lot drifting or doing donuts or all the other fun activities that people like to go there for, as well as unauthorized drone flying.
Yes.
This has been an issue, so.
Well, we can talk more offline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16, consider and take appropriate action on the award of a contract for audit services to Patilla Brown and Hill LOP to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal years ending September 30th, 2023, 2024, and 2025, and authorize the city manager to execute the engagement letter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, the city went out for a request for proposal in August. Were submitted for an auditing firm on September 1st. We received an open for proposals. From those, we interviewed three of them, we being a committee made up of myself, Senior Accounting Manager Bobby Coe, and council, council members Mitchell and Watson. And Patilla Brown and Hill, and Councilman Mitchell, you can cut in at any point to interrupt me. Patilla Brown and Hill just kind of blew us away with their professionalism, with the size of their staff, with the effective communication skills that they have, just the suggestions. As you know, it's, I was kind of an out-of-the-box hire, being an attorney and sitting in the finance director's seat. So I don't like to hear the, oh, well, this is the way it's always been done approach. And these guys showed us very succinctly, hey, we'll show y'all some new ways to bring us into the 20th century and into, actually, 2023, 2024. And we're excited because we feel, as excited as we can be with an auditing firm, we feel that these, that these individuals in this specific firm can take us into the next five years of growth because we know it's not coming. We know it's here. So, we have, we have very good candidates, but Patilla Brown and Hill stood above everyone else.
Yeah, we were pretty much all on the same page there at the end. We talked to the three face-to-face. These guys, PB and H, were very, very, I don't know, very, they were good socially, and they were good IT-wise, and knowing how to handle our data and transfer over to their data, and giving us their thoughts on how they thought things should happen and timing proved well with what we were really looking for before we started looking. You know, so I really, I agree with Jason's, these guys really stood out and were pretty much the fore runner most of the way through the project.
These guys were forward thinkers, and I believe that kind of fits the mold of where we are right now as a city, in the city staff, is forward thinking. So before you is a, is a contract, and we are recommending that you offer us a manager to execute the contract, and we will engage the firm shortly thereafter. If you have any other questions, just...
I'm seeing the contract, and I'm very familiar, having went through this process. The last time, we needed a new auditing firm. And I see their rate. I'm curious about the single audit that more than likely will be required this year because of federal funding that we'll have received and potentially are receiving. I'm not, I haven't read all this. Did I miss that, or is the single audit...
The single audit is rolled in to be overall cost.
Wonderful.
Yes.
All right.
And it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Mitchell, that it will be rolled in from here on out. And yes, we will have a single audit this year and next year at a minimum. But I'm not sure what the, what the exact number is. But obviously, if we don't require a single audit, then that will be deducted from the overall bill. Yeah, we're looking forward to, to working with them.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's a never-ending process. Thank you for being forward thinking.
Yes. And they are, they are headquartered in Waco. They, they're familiar with Minnow Wells. They, of course, want to be involved in the community. But, yeah, forward thinking, definitely.
Any further questions from council before we entertain a motion? None. It was a pleasure.
Well, I'll say thank you, Jason, and thank you, Councilmember Watson, and thank you, Councilman, for handling this process. I make motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee and award contract to Patilla Brown and Hill for auditing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Consider, item number 17, consider and take appropriate action on an interlocal agreement between the city of Minnow Wells and Palopena County for emergency medical services supplemental support in the amount of $144,000 for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, at your September the 19th meeting, I presented you with a proposed interlocal agreement with Palopena County proper for the continuation of emergency medical services in a service area designated for Minnow Wells Fire EMS, which included territory outside of the city limits. In that agreement, the county had agreed to, after our recommendation, to supplement our fire EMS needs $144,000. That agreement was a one-year term. It had renewal language in it, and also specific direction for all parties involved in this interest specifically to include the Palopena County Emergency Services District Number One representatives to dialogue and develop a long-term solution amenable to all the parties. At that time, I told you the Commissioners' Court had not convened to consider this at their representative deliberations. However, should substantive changes to the agreement come back from the county, I would present this to you for further consideration and action. Well, here I am. October the 2nd, the judge and the county attorney contacted the city with some changes to the proposal. Basically, it is a one-year term agreement with no renewal, no possible renewal, and more importantly, remove the county as a participant with regard to any ongoing, ongoing negotiations between the city of Minnow Wells and Palopena County Emergency Services District Number One. They remain resolute in their pledge of assisting our emergency medical services as a supplement in the amount of $144,000, and that is contained in their budget as well as ours. Just as an aside, on the 10th of October, the judge held a meeting which included representatives from the city and the ESD. We discussed some of the logistics of ESD's termination of the previous agreement on this EMS services agreement outside of our city limits. There were some topics which included 911 communication concerns, mutual aid, and resource staging. Even since that time, Mayor, the judge has contacted me that 911 communication issues are resolved. So that's not a concern. Saving except whatever tower, some type of mobile device, be it a cell phone or otherwise, might ping off. But... might ping off, but that's no longer a concern. Mutual aid and resource staging is still something that we'll need to work on and the city will continue to participate with ESD in that regard. There are additional talks scheduled for next week and we now have an ESD one designate to work through the concerns. This item is detached is for that revised agreement for your considerations and the purposes already stated. It has no renewal and no participation or dialogue with the judge. This one I did leave the red line on intentionally so you could see what the county changed. I'll take any questions yet, I'll give y'all a clean one.
Questions?
You guys don't have a choice.
I was gonna say, we still have money. It's really, to me, it's, it's a shame that, that, that the agreement, trying to come to an agreement between all three parties has been a challenge thus far, but I do appreciate the county for at least sticking to their word and committing to the $144,000 this year at least, but it would be nice if somehow we could come to an agreement within the next 12 months with all of them.
And I will have to say, it was a very healthy, I think, productive conversation with, you know, the, no intention of anyone trying to knee jerk react to anything, but the intent and purpose of this is to take that 12 months and kind of give all parties involved the deadline to make sure that, that end goal is going to be met by them.
Got you.
We're not gonna stop advancing the conversation. I mean, we have a date certain, the termination of our services leaving this city for emergency medical as of December 31st, 2023, and that's an option that was within the contract with ESD. It's outside of our city limits, it's outside of our tax recovery authority, and we respect that, but we will continue to attempt to dialogue. Mutual aid is very important out here in this rule setting where sometimes your closest assistance might be some time away. The third-party ambulance provider that's contracted through the ESD, I mean, we have a good working relationship with them, they back our firefighters up in town when, you know, that, that's something we've tried to emphasize, even in the reference on the issue was the per capita, because in this equation, it doesn't matter, you know, which team you play for, people's what matter, we're trying to represent the cost for people and our costs are escalating. We didn't create this problem, the, the market created it and paramedics continue to be at a high demand and, you know, maybe a warning for us, we have one year to figure out, what are we gonna do if we can even sustain EMS services here in our community? But those are discussions for a different time.
I agree, I believe it was a very productive meeting between the, the three entities. I'm thankful that they seemed to understand that the whole idea behind this was to get us all talking and have a year for us to try to work through this and see if we can come up with an equitable solution that works for all of us and looking forward to getting that done.
Any further comments or questions? None, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make the motion, we approve the interlocal agreement between Palopena County and the City of Mineral Wells.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number 18, consider and take appropriate action on an update from Mayor's Subcommittee on Water Affordability.
All right, I'll take this one. So if everyone remembers on September 12th, when we voted in the water rate increase and at, at that meeting also, the mayor wanted to put together a Subcommittee on Water Affordability. Both Councilman Watson, Councilman Tomlin and myself raised our hand to be on that committee. We had our first meeting this past Tuesday on the 10th and the outcome of that meeting was a couple of items here that's in the packet for, for everybody to review or has probably reviewed and seen. The first thing is, is we put together a small little flyer that we would like to have go out to all of the citizens because not everybody watches every city council meeting and not everybody necessarily is on Facebook or gets all the newspaper, but we'd like this to go by USPS, every door direct mail, to go to everybody's actual door instead of just be in their next bill so that they are made fully aware that the water rates are going into effect, I believe, are they in effect now?
November 1st.
November 1st, they go into effect. And the reasons for that increase and what it's going to, the investment is going to, and the overall projected minimum increase for them to expect and for any further details, we're allowed to. So that was one of the items that we came out of. The next was, could be a little more challenging, but the term we used was diplomacy to continue efforts, if possible, with the other three wholesalers that have not signed the new water agreements to this effect yet. Thanks to Mr. Sullivan, he, he kind of swagged some numbers together, but if somehow we had those three other wholesalers sign the new 30-year agreement, everybody's water bill could effectively go down between $6 to $7 per thousand gallons of usage. And based on my, based on my discussions with citizens, I figure about 1,000 gallons per person. So if you're a family of four, you could assume about 4,000 gallons a month, which could be up to $28 a month off your water bill. So that's something that could be more challenging, but we, we would like to explore more conversations amongst ourselves and with some of the other wholesalers. And we also hate to see that some of them still are on for five to seven years here, see them be a part of this investment for five to seven years and then just forfeit all that investment. I mean, if they're gonna be paying for part of it, we'd like to see them get to reap, you know, the benefits for the long, their citizens get to reap the benefits for the long term as well. Another thing that is something that we really want to look at once we get out of the, the drought that we're in right now, so just to be very clear, the water rates right now are also supporting this looming RO that we're gonna have to be renting. So at this moment in time, redisussion on any rate set is not happening. But if we can get out of, good Lord willing, we get some rain, we get some stuff happening, we get out of this drought, what we would like to look at is a tier structure change on our water structure. In essence, the way I've used it is, is people that want to be more conservative, people that want to use less water, pay a lower water bill rate, and people that want to water their yards, people that want to be a little more, I guess, nonchalant with their water usage, let them pay more of a luxury fee. Let them help front most of the costs and the citizens that want to conserve, let's not make it as painful on them with the price point of all this. So we want to look at a structured tier change, zero to 1,000 gallons, 1,000 to 3, 3 to 5, and then once you get above 5,000 gallons, the, the rates start to make a bigger jump to help cover the cost for the people that want to be more conservative and use less water. Again, once again, this is very preliminary, we still need to get together the actual average usage of all of our citizens in this City of Mineral Wells so that we kind of can baseline our average usage and then go off of there. But anyways, that's just kind of a discussion we had. And then a side note of it is, this actually was an outcome of a conversation I had with a citizen in the, in the community, but we had talked about a discount for citizens over 65 with a homestead exemption. However, there is a good amount of citizens in this community that are over 65, they do not get to have a homestead exemption because they have granted or deeded their property to their next closest kin or their children for other reasons that several people probably know why, in the event they ever had to go to a home or something like that and they wouldn't have to be forced to sell their homes. So that kind of makes that, looking at that option, a little bit less glamorous anyways from our perspective. But anyways, that's kind of the overall cliff notes of our first meeting that we had there, so welcome, any, any questions or comments from anybody, guys?
Also on the dais, you'll find the revised and most updated proposed water notice. And I'm not sure, I guess we are waiting on direction in order to get this finalized, in order to place it within our water bills that go out. I will also discuss and meet with the city clerk about putting an ad in the newspaper. Obviously, we'll put it on our website as well, but I guess we need to get it kind of okayed by you guys in order to move forward to.
Well, I would just say thanks for this report, thanks for your work. I would only suggest as you go forward, as you were talking about this tier possibly changing the, the way the tiers are currently done, get some good input from our rate consultant because we have a, we have a tiered structure now that, that takes care of most of those concerns and, and before you get too far down the road, make sure you get some good counsel through, through our rate consultants because they're really smart on that stuff.
Yeah, 100%, we gotta maintain our debt service coverage and everything for, for the bonds that we're taking on, so it's something that, you know, it's not something that we can just willingly throw a rate out and go, it's gonna have to be ran by the rate consultants, so.
Appreciate all y'all's work.
Right, and it, it may have been overshadowed, the next five years and our rate consultant is not just the one and done, you know, come around every five years. The next five years, we'll be actively engaging our rate consultant at every conceivable opportunity to reduce this rate, the burden on the customers, both our retail service and our wholesalers, at every possible opportunity. We have the unfortunate situation with our RO requirement as our, we're not getting any rank, but the rate consultants will be consulted as part of our budget process every year. Y'all should receive the full comprehensive study that's required every five years, but this is one time in, you know, a long time when that, that rate consultant will be actively, especially as we get more baseline information as these new rates relate to usage, there is a statewide effort for conservation, but this time, we're not just gonna take the rate consultant and just, you know, here it is, spit the bit, so to speak. This, this one will be very active, all five years for sure, and just like the active monitoring of the cost of those construction projects to get them done right, most importantly within budget, but where there is opportunity, have a goal trying to cut that down where we can, whether that's through partnership, reengineering, and all the while, we're gonna continue to seek funding through the state and federal resources right up until, we can't wait any longer because of the increased costs, so the rate deal is not just a simple once and done, no.
Paul, do you have any discussion on utility assistance programs?
No, ma'am, we did not have much discussion on that. We did have some other, kind of just very high level discussions because, you know, the all encompassing of your water bill is your water, your sewer, your trash and your drainage fee in there, so we had some very high level conversations on some of the other items, but we gotta gather more information before we can really start digging into those a little more.
I'd be remiss if I let this go, but on, on the revised water notice, it says, "For project details and frequently asked questions, visit turkeypeakreservoir.com." I really want to push that because I'm now gonna stand up for my staff. I have two ladies who work every single day and they will answer the phone, they will get hit with the majority of these gripes complaints, hopefully some praises, but, so just thinking realistically, we really need to focus on the alternative source of communication, the websites, the, yeah, as opposed to the phone calls because my staff is gonna become extremely overloaded and, you know, if, if past themes or if past behaviors kind of come back, then, I mean, I, I just have a, I have a concern about just the beating down that would happen to my staff.
Well, there has been a significant amount of information added in the past couple months to the Turkey Peak website, not only in regards to the FAQ, but to the overall Turkey Peak budget, to many other items on there, and I know that they are still working on even more information, work on to be uploaded on there, so it is a very good resource for all citizens to refer to for information and data. Jason, you need us to tell go with this?
Just direction.
I think so, yeah, just to yay, just to thumb up or thumb down because then I could use this and start getting with who I need to get to in order to get it inserted and city clerk in order to give it notice or public.
And I think we, I think citizens, like I said, not everybody watches the council meetings, not everybody's on social media, so I, I, I think it's a must to get it to everybody's doorstep.
Yeah, and we'll distribute it to, to all the media outlets and put it up on the website as well, just so, you know, it can be inundated through everybody's head that, hey, this is, this is coming up and this is important.
Yeah, I anticipate there probably being some further confusion because I had the opportunity to make some phone calls to some folks earlier that I knew that had signed the recall petition, who were simply under the impression that their water rates would go down if that passed tonight, so it's, it's nice to have one central location for the FAQ and as always, you know, the council's open, we have emails and answer questions and talk all the time about the actual facts of the project.
Well, since you brought up the websites and the location of the FAQs, do we want to, before this goes out, do we want to make mention of the Turkey Peak website as the place to go for further questions?
It's on the rev.
It's on the revised one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm looking at the draw. Take it. I got it. I was looking at the one in my package, so I apologize. I'm glad that's on there.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for working on that. And then I guess, y'all tend to meet semi-regularly.
12th November that we've got skipped, or the 16th, Karen. We, we already have our next meeting on the docket, though, this minute.
Awesome, thank you.
Counsel, do you mind?
No, sir.
No, I, I, I have.
No, sir.
Per, I, I want to quote the Open Meetings Act.
No, sir, you stop, please.
Okay, I'll quit, but I'm gonna notice y'all that, that we have a right to talk on specific agenda items.
You weren't starting the meeting at this point, so stop talking or leave. I'm gonna move forward to item number 19, consider and take appropriate action on a resolution nominating candidates for the Parker County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Parker County, Texas.
At the last meeting, y'all nominated people for the Palopeno Appraisal District. This time, Rick Armstrong has given me the okay to submit a late resolution to him. He is the chief appraiser for Parker County Appraisal District. Senate Bill Two had some significant, significant changes. Parker County has a population of over 75,000, so you'll be required, they will be required to have nine members versus the five that they currently have, so y'all will need So y'all will need to nominate between one and five candidates, and that will need to be by resolution. In your packet on page 248, they do list five members, Cody Lane, Jerry Durant, John Hinton, Richard Barrett, and Sterling Naren. So I'm not sure if you're wanting to nominate him or if there are other people that need to be nominated.
I don't have any objections to that. We get a walking five votes.
Yes, ma'am.
Out of what looks like more than a couple of thousand. Okay. No further questions. What's the pleasure of the council? Do we have to note this, that we split our votes evenly, like those listed, like we did? Just for nomination, just for now, so, okay.
Anywhere between one and five.
I make a motion to nominate the candidates for the Parker County Appraisal District Board of Directors in Parker County, Texas, as follows. Cody Lane, Jerry Durant, John Hinton, Richard Barrett, Sterling Naren.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six-zero. To item number 20, future agenda items or requests by council members to be on the next agenda. They won't have anything they want to present. If none, we proceed to item number 21. We adjourned.
Yeah.
You didn't touch me.
Well, you were over there talking to people.
You don't. I was falling, making a fool. But I wouldn't bother me. I would have sprout.
How's it going?
Good, well, how are you feeling?
It's splendid.
All I do is jump my ass a lot. You know, I ask about being listened to.
Oh, no, I got to.
Me?
Yeah, I've got to.
It's been a lovely day in the neighborhood.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about this, I'm really, I don't know. I'm assuming that five million dollars needs to, would look, look. Look what has already happened to plastic park. I mean, it has not even been, I mean.
You put some bridges in my city park, another beginning or two up. You're, you're taking, you make a swing field somewhere real quick, and you're good. That deal, that deal taken away from your baseball field. You can't do it.
Really?
No, like Saturdays in the spring is like.
Okay, thank you. I was out there this weekend. They've done such a nice job. My kiddo got to fly this weekend.
Oh, cool.
Oh, my God. He's so. So let's make sure we get this right. I'll make sure that I'm not missing it. So if he's staying on, they can't do anything because there's not enough time. By August is when they would have had to call a special election. For the November, it only can happen in November, in May. It's May, 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 May is at my reelection, so.